I move to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Nysley?
Here.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Here.
Councilmember Ring?
Here.
Councilmember Cortez?
Here.
Mayor Youngblood?
Here.
I move to approve the agenda.
My second.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye, and can you hear me? My mic wasn't working. Okay. First business is basically we are going to hand this is the candidates of the election results, so basically we're going to adopt the revolution for your election. Can I do myself? Is it about the normal action or?
It's a normal action, Madam Mayor, but you also need to ask for public comment on that item as well, too.
Before we do that, thank you, I appreciate that. Can we have some public comments? Anybody in the audience want to get up and speak and do that in person on Zoom? So, yeah, regarding the election before we actually certify it?
Anne Baker-Loomis, I am here to give a final update from the Measure C Campaign Committee. It's been a pleasure being with you all this year. I'm thrilled to announce that Measure C passed by 71.4% yeses. We were just thrilled and excited and very proud that the town council decided to, first of all, poll the people in 2023. And it's interesting, the data aligned exactly with how the election turned out. I think one of the most important things is always staying in touch with your constituents, and that's what you guys were doing. And the results of that was about 70% too, that people would vote for the measure. So I think the investigation you did kind of prompted people to get excited about this time to work on this, and you put it on the ballot and you let the people speak, and the people spoke very loudly that they loved their library. I do want to just, one lesson that I learned in the campaign, just how, what a great community we have, and people really wanted to talk about it. So getting out, the canvassing, holding events, talking about it, it was time, time well spent. We had an outstanding core committee, and I do want to recognize the whole committee was Bonnie London, Grace Camp Hefner, Jan, Clark Creutz, Deborah Crosby, and Susan Slavik, and Susan's in the crowd tonight, too. Anyway, the whole team kind of came together and brought all the different components we needed for a campaign team. And of course, so many people in the community stepped up and helped get the message out, and that was our whole goal, is we could educate and let people know. We were able to do the whole campaign without hiring a consultant, and so we will have some money left over. We were very frugal and did what we had to do, but we will be able to make a contribution to the Friends of Loomis Library to help continue their support of the Loomis Library. And finally, I just wanted to say, you know, a quote that really hits home is, was shared with me recently, that bad libraries build collections, good libraries build services, but great libraries build community. And I think the strategy that was selected in 2016 to make it not a library, but to make it a library learning center is what's made the difference, and Sarah and her staff took it and ran with it, and it could not be more of a community-oriented library learning center. People are super proud of it, so I just wanted to give you guys that final update from the committee. It was a pleasure for us to work. I'm going to miss all my public buddies that we've been hanging out together all year, but it was a great effort by the whole team and the community, so thank you.
Anybody else in the audience want to get into public comment for me on Zoom?
No.
So that will be the first thing.
I move to adopt the certification of the 2024 election.
My second.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye.
So at this point, we're going to come back to certain national matters concerning officers. Just going to start with recognition proclamation. The first is the town clerk, Cricket, who is our current clerk. Come over and swear in, current, future clerk. That's how we're going to do it now. Do you want to do both, one did it first, then recognition later?
Do the recognition first.
Just going to be about the recognition first, recognition, yeah. So, but I mean, I just, so I can ask the city council of the staff of recognition here? I'm just saying, I think that if you should, your, her, whoever, the recognition, so she's going to have to swear everybody else, right?
I think procedurally, because at this moment, I think Carol was going to give the certificate to Cricket, and then Cricket was going to turn around and swear Carol in, who can swear everybody else in, so.
Yeah, and then you give her the recognition, the post clerk, yeah, that's right. So, yeah.
I'm going to start with you first. So Cricket, you have been a force with the town for a really long time. When I was reading through the paperwork and I saw that you were first appointed in '96 and then voted in, there's a wealth of history in the town that you've been a part of, you've been a part of from so close to the beginning of the town. I couldn't be where I am today without the leadership and without the compassion and without the humanity that you've always shown. So this, Cricket struck with sincere gratitude and appreciation for your many years of dedicated service as a town clerk for the town of Loomis, 8/5 of 1994 through 12/10 of 24. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, are you ready for this?
I'm ready.
Yes, I'm so excited for this. Let me get my glasses on. The light is very good. Okay. Here we go. The last hurrah here, the last hurrah. For the office of town clerk, for the office of town clerk, state your name. I, Carol Harper, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and its Constitution of the State of California. Yes, all enemies, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of California, and the Constitution of California. That I keep this obligation freely, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation, without any mental reservation, or purpose of evasion, or purpose of evasion, and that I will well, and faithfully discharge and faithfully discard the duties upon, the duties upon which I am about to, and about to. Okay. Good.
Okay, come on back.
All right. Did you say that to me? Thank you. So it looks like next on the agenda is, Russ, you're going to be giving a recognition to Randy, correct?
Randy's not here, so we'll give him some.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So then the next one, obviously, is Councilmember Jenny Nysley and Mayor Youngblood. That is me, yes. [laughing]. Okay. So, I've gotten to know you for a very long time. I know at the very beginning I was a planning commissioner and, oh. This is more personal, just, you know, I know you all want to hear it, but like, there are three people that I've gotten to know in the course of my time. Obviously, a future mayor again, Mr. Cartwright appointed me to the planning commission and had faith in me when nobody else really knew who I was or anything and got me going. He and you and future Councilmember Cart Creutz had a lot of impact on where I am today. And in that time, I feel like we've gained trust and we've worked together on a lot of things, and you and I have become friends. And I was very honored that I was allowed to actually give this, because I thought that this was going to be Mayor Ring's duty to do this, because, you know, it's, I'm sorry, I'm trying not to get emotional, because I know it's going to make you emotional, but I've learned a lot from you, and it's very hard for me to, I know this isn't goodbye, I know I'm probably either going to see you back on the council in the future, or we'll be working in some capacity, but I want you to know that, and I'm a loss for words, but I want to present this to you, because I feel like, over the course of time, I've gotten to know you so well, and I'm feeling emotional that this is it. But this is basically for the long years, and I just want to put to you that this is not just you being on the council, everything you've done for the town of Loomis, in the chamber, the singer center, being on the council, being the mayor during COVID. She got us out of COVID. That's something I want to say in '22, when I was actually running, she was the mayor, so that was kind of a special thing for me. I learned a lot from her and Jenny about how horrible I am as a mayor, and I'm kidding, but I'm very honored, and what it says is Jenny Nysley with sincere gratitude and appreciation for your long hours and dedication, and, boy, those were some long hours, dedicated service on the town, Loomis Town Council, and I'm sorry, I'm trying not to get emotional, so December 8th through, you know, of 2020, when you got elected, through December 10th of 2024. There you go, and, I'm going to give you a hug. Take a picture?
Three, one way.
Okay, let's take a picture and then, you want to say a couple words?
Yeah, I just want to say, it was a pleasure working with all the staff. I really enjoyed it. It was hard, COVID and a couple other challenges we had in the last couple of years, but I'm very happy that I did, and I am not going anywhere, like my family says, I'm not dead yet. So I'm going to, I'm going to be around and still do all the things that I do, so thank you so much.
But we have to, I have to, we have to, you know, the county, the district, the, the active members. All right. Oh, boy. I just got.
I just wrote up a couple things. Not a lot.
I know, I'm just being, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Miguel.
Leaving, leaving, she's just not the mayor anymore.
Ouch.
So you and I didn't always agree on everything, but what I really liked is that we were able to stay friends throughout all this. And even when we disagreed, I knew that your heart was in the right place. And so I just wanted to let you know that I personally appreciate everything you've done for this town, and I look forward to the next two years working with you on the council, and this could be a good time. So on behalf of myself and the rest of the council, the town staff, and the town itself, I would like to give you this plaque as a thank you for your dedicated service as mayor for the town of Loomis 2024.
Thank you, David. Have a hug. All right. Now, please, a question. I would like Danny and Jan and Cole to come up to the press. Oh, you can say it in your, yeah.
So it seems to be weird to be doing this as like the town clerk, because I've done it as deputy several different times, so I do find this to be a great honor. So what you're going to do is you're going to repeat after me, and when I say state your name, you're going to say your name, not state your name. I, state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations.
So at this point, you guys are going to go ahead and seat the new council, make sure that everybody's seated, and you guys are going to choose the mayor, protect the mayor. So you're going to, kind of, kind of, about Jan? Oh, and then? Stephanie, you're going to move over.
Oh, don't I, I appoint him first, and then I move? Like, that's what, when he was mayor, he did that to me? Okay, I want to move, making a motion to remove myself and put myself over there and make David Ring the new mayor for 2025, and certify the election, David, but Jan, well, yeah, she's coming up here. She's going to be the mayor pro temp. But I'm making a motion to put you as the mayor.
So once everybody's seated, so you're going to make a motion, and we have to have either two separate motions, or the one motion has to say both things, right, Jeff?
Okay, I'll start over. I'm making a motion to appoint David Ring as the next mayor, and with an add-on that we're bringing Jan in again as mayor pro temp, as she has just gotten reelected. Is that fine?
Is that okay?
It'll do, okay.
My second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Youngblood?
Aye.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Creutz?
Yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
And Mayor Ring?
All right, you're staying put, I think. Can you do me a huge favor and slide that down?
I can.
Thank you, sorry, it's heavy. That's, well, you can do it now. All right, Jan, just what you do.
Sorry. Can I have a shift this in fact? Congratulations.
You'll get used to it.
And all of us stand up and give them your best, right?
So the first thing I would like to do as mayor is something that I really truly believe in, is public comment, and so we forgot to take public comment for the mayor appointees, so does anybody have any comment on the motion we just passed?
That includes saying congratulations.
Congratulations.
To you.
To me?
Yeah, that.
If you want to say congratulations to me, you're, I'm not going to say congratulations to myself.
All right, I'm just going to say something. So I think public comment at this point is, you're welcome to get up and say congratulations to the new council members as well as mayor. That's what we did last time. That's what the public comment is.
You don't have to thank me.
But that's what it is, so, just saying.
So the next, or if there's no, I'm going to close public comment, then the next item on the agenda is the, oh my goodness. All right.
Sorry, I want to make a public comment to David, and thank you for all those monthly meetings that you hold with the people in the town. I couldn't make this last Saturday, because it was our church Christmas party, but I want to thank you for every month and reaching out to us. Thank you.
That counts.
Anybody on Zoom? So the next item on the agenda is the 40th anniversary proclamation, which... All right. So for those of you who don't know, I don't know how you would know, but this is the 40th anniversary of the town of Loomis incorporating, and we do have an original member of the town of Loomis council with us. If you'd like to come up, we can, you don't, you stand, this is Roy Heppard. He was on the original council. And we also have several members, Jenny being one of them, also who are on the council in the past. Is anybody else on the council over the past 40 years? That's besides, yeah. Can you, if you would like to stand up, that would be great, if not, you don't have to. You don't want to. All right.
All right, that's okay.
Thank you. So the first thing I get to, second thing I get to do as mayor is read to you this long proclamation. All right, so whereas on December 17th, 1984, the town of Loomis held formal ceremonies marking its incorporation swearing in the first members of the town council. And, Loomis founded in 1850 and originally named Pine Grove, was renamed Placer in 1861, and then Smithville the following year, and in 1869, the name was again changed to Pino, with the town finally receiving its last and current name on May 28th, 1890. And, whereas the town was named after James Oscar Loomis, who lived from 1830 to 1895 and served the town as postmaster, railroad express agent, and store and saloon keeper. And, whereas the incorporation of the town of Loomis demonstrates the dedication and hard work of its citizens, who for seven years have worked toward its incorporation in order to keep the town of Loomis an independent entity. And, whereas over the past 40 years, the town has seen significant progress in local planning and redevelopment. Today, citizens can enjoy our parks, playgrounds, attend special events, stroll our streets with sidewalks and lighting, and frequent our local restaurants and businesses. And, whereas our current vision to be a thriving town possessing the core values of family, education, and economic prosperity, while embracing our rural character matches the vision and goals set forth 40 years ago. And now therefore, on this occasion of the town of Loomis's 40th anniversary, the town council of the town of Loomis do hereby proclaim the year 2025 as a year of celebration of the town's 40th anniversary, and urges all citizens to join in this celebration. So this is a celebration for all of us, not just the town council, and so please, please, please congratulate yourselves on choosing such a great town to live in. And so I don't even know where this is going to hang.
I don't know.
But in the future, I mean, you can all come and read it in town hall, I'm guessing. All right. We are going to have cookies and a short intermission.
Can I say something?
I think we can have public comment, yeah, we'll do that.
Let me, let me ask first, does anybody on the council have anything they want to say?
Okay, actually, I'm going to face the audience. You guys can listen. My name is Miguel Yukovich, and I was one of the members of the original incorporation committee, and I don't know, Mr. Hubert, and I, you were. I think, we're it, right, Coach? Okay, you can correct me if I'm wrong and add in some names that I forgot. But the way this all started was, there was a group, and it was to keep Loomis rural, and it had been in existence for several years. And then at some point in time, the group kind of switched over and petitioned the county and LAFCO, the local agency information committee, to form the town of Loomis. And they gave permission for the citizens of Loomis to go out and vote on this particular issue. And there was a group that was formed, that was the Loomis incorporation committee, and I'm going to name a couple of people here. So one of the members was Bill Branch. I don't know if any of you remember Bill or know Bill, but he was a reporter for Channel 13, an on-air reporter. And what was neat back at those times, besides being on our committee, Channel 13 brought in a helicopter every day and landed it on Bill's property so he could go to work, so he didn't have to worry about traffic. Another... Another person that was great, and she was the psychic for the group, and literally, she was a psychic, and her name was Gretchen Crispillo. And she was the one that actually formed Keep Loomis Rural. And if you ever met Gretchen, you'll notice that her fingernails were about six inches long, and she was one of the hardest workers that you will ever see. Another one who was really the cornerstone of the whole town and the whole movement, and that was Hazel Heimlein. Hazel just had more energy, drove us, and kept the committee going day after day. Another person who was our transplant, and really worked hard, became our first mayor, and that was Ann Blue. Another person that, on the committee that worked without any rest or anything, and that was Greg Fellers. He was a veterinarian in the area, and Greg was a real hard worker. There's another person, and she was a good friend of Ann Blue's, and I can't remember her last name. Her first name was Carol. I don't know if anybody knows who I'm talking about, but she was another member of the committee. And then, the other member of the committee that I can think of, and I can't remember his name, he was an accountant in town, and he did all our financial work. So, anyway, we got all these people together, and we had the vote back in November. And that night, when the vote came out, we all met over at, Mike Lee had a deli right across the street. And we all met over there, and back then, the results, I guess, came out around 8 o'clock. And when the results came out, we knew right off the first run, I think it was like 68% of the people voted to form the town. And so, that was the town. And one of the unique things about that night, after we got that vote, I walked outside, looked up Taylor Road toward Del Oro, and there were some clouds, and there was a rainbow over Taylor Road. And I've never seen anything like that before. But that's a little bit of the history of how we were able to form the town. It was with a lot of hard work of people, but it's probably the best decision that was probably made in California, as far as towns are considered. I think we have the best town, the best community, the best leaders of anybody. People that come here from other towns, and you had people come here from all over the United States, they just wish their town was like Loomis. So, again, that's a little bit about the history of Loomis, and thank you for coming tonight.
I remember a lot of those names that Miguel just brought up. I moved here 39 and a half years ago from Rockland, and so, I'm thankful to be here. I know Jan's been here for a very long time, too, but I love this town, and I'm not going to be going anywhere. It's a great town. I love all the new stuff that's going around, the Blue Goose, I love our library. I'm there all the time, and the restaurants, but I want to say, you know, I just missed out, you know, on the 40, but June of 85, 39 and a half years ago, so, thank you.
Thanks Pam, and thank you Miguel. Anybody else?
I guess the big thing I'd like to say is, why did we incorporate? I mean, we were in the county. A lot of people didn't want us to incorporate because their taxes were going to go up. They didn't realize that the county does the auditing, or whatever it is, appraising, but they were scared of increased taxes, so that prevented them from voting to incorporate. But we incorporated for the main reason that Loomis was encroaching on, Rockland was encroaching on Loomis to a great deal. A fellow by the name that owned a car dealership in Roseville, Clark Turner, owned all the property where you see Walmart, and Bass Pro Shop, and the other areas, and that vicinity. And he didn't like the county, so he decided he would, as a one-man vote, join Rockland, which you could do if you owned that amount of acreage. And he joined, he joined Placer, or Rockland, so he could have a freedom of choice how he wanted to do his plan. He was a client of mine at the time, having been in the insurance business, and he, his dream was to take the property where Costco is, which he owned, and the property across the street which he owned, and put it over the freeway restaurant. That never came to pass, obviously, because he unfortunately didn't live long enough to do it. But that was his original plan, and that's when we finally decided that we better incorporate in order to stop the Rockland, Loomis from becoming Rockland. And that was the original reason, and I surely went along with that since my grandmother went to grammar school here. So, thanks a lot.
Anybody on Zoom? All right, so we're going to take a 15-minute recess. There's cookies in the back, the water is, we'll be back here in 15 minutes, about 6:50.
Oh, oh, oh.
Alright, so I got to call the next order. I do want to again say thank you to everybody who showed up tonight. They'll have helped us celebrate our 40th anniversary and we've been all year. So at this time in the meeting is time for public comments. Vote for items not on the agenda. This time is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the council on subjects that are not already on the agenda. Each speaker is allowed three minutes of time. The audience should be aware that we may not discuss details or vote on any non-agenda items. However, we may refer your concerns to staff or ask them, or ask that an item be placed on a future agenda. So does anybody have any public comment on item four items not on the agenda? No? Anybody on Zoom? Next up is the consent agenda. I am going to pull number six. Does anybody else have anything that they would like to pull? No? Does anybody in the public have any items that they would like to be pulled from the consent agenda? Anybody on Zoom? Looking for motion?
I move to, you're pulling just six, right? Okay, to approve two through five and seven? To, you know, push them along, move them along excluding six.
Second?
A second.
Do we, I'm going to just do a voice vote if that's okay? Just to, is that alright? Alright, all in favor of approving the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so item six, let me get that real quick. Do you want to discuss it Wes, because we had talked about it earlier? Or you don't want to talk about it?
I want to go first, Richard.
Okay, so staffs made corrections to the resolution to match the amount shown on the staff report. So the revised amount is fifty thousand to a hundred thousand.
Yeah, so just to be clear, at the very last, which is now therefore is hereby resolved, everything stays the same except that the one sixty-two number goes to fifty and the two hundred twenty-two goes to one hundred.
That's correct.
That was my main concern. Anybody else have anything they want to add? Anybody in the public have any comments on item number six? Okay, is there anybody on the line?
No. There is somebody on the line.
Okay, okay. Can I get a motion to approve number six?
I move to approve six.
I second.
All in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes. Now we have matters of interest to council members.
Yeah, I do. Thank you so much, Mayor. Well, first, I wanted to say congratulations to our newly seated council, Danny and Jan. I'm really excited to get some things done this year. So, and we even have new seating arrangements, so it's very, very interesting that you're sitting next to me, so that's exciting. I also would like to congratulate Measure C and everybody that worked so hard on that. I wanted to thank the, the community also for placing their trust in the council when they passed Measure C. I think what is seventy-one point four percent, I think that's, that's outstanding. On the same breath, though, I would like to express my deep sadness or disappointment, I guess, for Measure E. We, the problems still remain with our school districts. And as a school liaison, I have had the opportunity to see firsthand the things that need to be done. And with the rezoning that's happening in Penrin, we are going to need our aging schools to be, to be maintenance in a way that right now we can't afford. So hopefully, we have a Plan B on that. And then lastly, I would really like to thank Mindy Mullenbrook and Shine With Purpose for everything that they did. As usual, another wonderful day before Thanksgiving Day Parade. Thank you, Carol, for helping in the collaboration of getting things ready, like the banners ordered and stuff for the float. And thank you to my fellow council members for being willing to participate. I think it was super fun and we heard from the community that they really liked having the presence. And that was actually at the request of Mindy and Shine With Purpose. She wanted the town to have a float, so it was really exciting. Unfortunately, Jenny had already committed to the senior float, but we would have loved to have had her. But she's, as usual, is, is busy with many other different things because she has such a heart for the community. So anyways, but thank you so much and I just, I'm looking forward to a new year. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Actually, you know, since I'm, because mine was just gonna, I wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Cortez for organizing that float. I thought that, did I steal it? No. You did a great job and I really appreciate it. I also, Brian, former council member.
Yes, thank you, Brian Baker, for letting us, yes, yes.
He was the one who let us use his trailer.
Trailer, yeah.
So thank you, thank you to him. And I'm hoping that we can make this a new year.
Yes, yes, we need to start making arrangements. The council needs to put in all of their, their thoughts.
This past Saturday, my wife was playing Christmas carols at the house. And one of the carols has a line in it where it says, "This is the most wonderful time of the year." And so I had that in my head, it was all throughout the day, just kept repeating. And then that night, we had the Christmas tree lighting ceremony here and it was wonderful. The tree is magnificent, it's uplifting to look at as you come into town. And all the people who were around in, in good cheer and having friendly conversations with one another. It reminded me and it reaffirmed that, that song, "This is the most wonderful time of the year." And that happens in a little town like this of Loomis. And so I'm grateful for all the volunteers and the staff who arranged and made, had everything in play for this wonderful Christmas tree and that event. And that's one of the reasons why we live here. And so, thank you to everyone who had a part in that.
I agree with that. I also wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Cortez and Mindy for getting the float going. That was very fun and I agree that the town was well overdue, we needed that. Also, last but certainly not least, want to congratulate, we elected council member and future mayor pro temp, Danny Cartwright. And I'm so happy to see you back on the council, Jan, Councilmember Clark Creutz. And great to see the two others that I've ran with that are still here and we have a lot of work to do and I think we're going to have a good year. So, thank you very much for everybody sticking together on this and yeah, back to you, Mayor Ring. Right? That's what it felt like.
Now it's time for the town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As always, my town manager's report is in the agenda packet for all those who wish to review it. There's one item in here that I want to highlight. It's been in the, my report for a couple cycles now. The municipal service review from the LAPCO Agency Formation Commission has initiated the Town of Loomis's MSR on their, so we actually, they sent all the information to staff to start filling out the documents. And they've asked us to have those documents back to them by January twenty-fifth. So this is a kickoff of the process of identifying the community's ability to meet the, the current build-out, potential sphere of influence, area of service needs, including our partnerships with the districts with the fire, sanitation, sewer and water. It's, it's something that every jurisdiction is required to have. And unfortunately, Loomis has never actually done one, so we got to start from scratch. So this isn't building off the existing one. Then down the road, one of the items that council needs to be able to answer is their interest in a sphere of influence in the Town of Loomis. But that's much later, this is probably going to be a two, two and a half year process that we're going to be going through. At certain points, pieces of it will be coming to council for education, for the, for the council and the public. So, Mr. Mayor, that's what I have for the council tonight.
Wes? Are you going to do public comments for the? Next is the Loomis Library and Community Learning Center. And now for the Loomis Chamber comments.
Good evening, congratulations to all and we're excited for the new year to come. I have some super exciting news to share. Our Christmas basket mixer raised a whopping fifteen thousand dollars for the Loomis Basin Christmas Basket Program. And we are so excited, largest amount that they have raised to date, in addition to the tons of toys and things like that. So we're just so excited for the impact that it's making and want to thank everybody that, all the businesses, the community members, that were just so generous with that whole project. They are still working through that and the actual giving event is this weekend where they're going to have the people come through and receive those donations. So they're still working towards it, but our little piece of that contribution went towards that. So that was very exciting to share that news. As far as upcoming events, we have our Coffee Connect on January second here in this room. And we're going to do a little meet and greet with the new mayor. So if you want to get any more information about mayor ring, then come see us then. And then we have our monthly mixer across the street over at Santosha Yoga on January sixteenth and that's going to be at five thirty. And we also want to announce to save the date for our awards dinner, which is going to be February twentieth at The Blue Goose and tickets will be available soon. And then another exciting thing that has been like a pet project of mine and I'm so excited to see it come to fruition is that we have our new community calendar launched on the website. And so now all the public, community people can go and anybody that's hosting their event can put it on the website, submit it. They can upload their graphics, put all the information and everything, put links for tickets and it all goes directly back to the websites. But basically created a hub for the events of what's going on in town. And so we're super excited to launch that, spread the word and it'll be going out on social media and things like that. So just checking one more thing off the box here. That's pretty much all that I have for the chamber, but we're just closing out the year end. So if you guys have any questions, let me know.
Yeah, it's fun, I can't wait.
Thank you.
Now you've got the allied agency activities updates. The order that I have in the agenda says that public comment should be first.
Chief Durr.
One of you has to come up.
It looks fine.
What's that?
It looks fine.
What looks fine? Oh, yeah, oh.
Because of earlier, yeah, it looks great.
Yeah. First, I'd like to bring up, or introduce to you the new Loomis Substation Station Commander, Lieutenant Jason Doolittle. No, you want to come up? Okay, okay, sounds good. I'll start with the stats for Loomis for the month of November. We had two hundred and fifty-five incidents, thirty-seven reports taken and five transient-related calls. Down the right column, the suspicious activity calls eighteen, disturbance calls fourteen, alarm calls fifteen and traffic stops fifty-one. So now I'll be working down the center with the citizen calls versus deputy initiated activity calls. So a hundred and fifty-five to a hundred. Priority level calls, one through nine, as you can see on the pie graph there. And the call breakdown there. And then we have our disposition, these are just the top ten for the area. Contacted with no crime was a hundred and thirty-one, probable cause disposition thirty-nine, reports taken twenty-eight, unable to locate nineteen, assistance to other agencies eighteen, false alarms nine, arrests five, citations, it was like four, and then WR and, and then air. Not too familiar with what those two are.
Could that be warrants?
Do you know what WR is? I'm not, I'm, neither am I. So that's the stats for the month of November. Just some highlights for the month of November. Like we spoke about, the day before Thanksgiving Parade was a huge success. Our goal as the sheriff's office is to provide a safe, friendly environment for all the parade goers. So make sure the roadways are safe, that they're locked down, there's no vehicles, unruly participants, anything like that. And I think we do a pretty good job of providing that. It was a very good parade and it ran, it ran well, it was well attended, it was, it was a good day. Secondly, for November, we had the Manta Run, which is a run that supports the schools. We had, according to the school district, they had the, the most runners of all time, which was over eight hundred runners for that. We provide the traffic security control for, for the event. And happy to say that there weren't any incidents and that everyone, everyone was safe. There was a lot of runners out there, so that's, that's a big deal, especially when we're running on the roadway. We have met already about doing some few things differently for that run. We're looking to meet again with the schools and make sure that we provide a continued safe environment for all the runners that participate. Let's see. The teaching that I do for the eighth grade classes throughout the county, month of November was very busy. Let's see, I had one, two, three, four, five, six schools with a total of three hundred eighth grade students all went through that. That math, science, traffic investigation class seems to be a hit, which I'm super happy about. And so that H. Clark, Loomis Grammar, Penrin, Franklin, Loomis Basin Charter and Newcastle all, all went through it, just in the November, month of November. So, super stoked about that. We're still having issues at Delaware High School during pickup hours. I, you know, hopefully we'll get to a point at some time where we can get parents and students to obey traffic laws and just trust the, the, the system that we've kind of put in place to, to pick up your student in a safe manner. So it's still a work in progress, but still some issues going on up there. And lastly, And lastly, it gets, remember that it is getting dark early, and there's inclement weather. I know that we haven't had any in a couple of weeks, but it's coming. So, it's, it's hard to see. So, slow down, don't be a distracted driver, and just obey the laws. That's the biggest request on our part. So, if there aren't any questions, I'll turn it over to the lieutenant.
Just real quick. You said issues at Del Oro. Is that more, that's more than just traffic you're talking about?
No, I'm referring to traffic-related stuff. Yep, yep. I go there and observe the traffic during pickup and drop-off times and have taken a more of an educational approach, trying to educate parents that of certain traffic laws and where we want pickup and drop-off to occur and not occur. It's for the safety of the students. So, it's, it's definitely a partnership with obviously the town and, you know, and the school. So, the school's made some improvements in their, in their traffic plan approach, which was very helpful. So, now we just, we got to continue to get parents on board and just follow, follow our basic rules. That's, that's what we're asking. Any other questions?
Thank you. So, I'm new back to Loomis. I grew up in Loomis and Newcastle, Del Oro student. My daughter's a Del Oro student, so we're three generations deep in Loomis. I had the ability to, I was fortunate enough to be part of the program on Saturday, and I was completely impressed with how everybody pulled together. I was also quickly reminded why I use gift bags, because I can't wrap. But it was a great program. So, I mean, I was just amazed at how many people showed up and just the amount of donations was great. Just a couple of quick things. Right now, the Sheriff's Office is, we're doing our Secret Santa program. We have an anonymous donor that has donated basically American Express gift cards for families in need, residential structure fires, assaults, stuff like that. So, if you have anybody that pops in mind, if you hear from somebody, please send them my way. We have about another week, week and a half. We've been doing very well with the program right now. And it's, it's quite a bit of money that we like to give back to the community. The donor wants us to give it to the community. Nothing, exchange hands, he just gives it to us so we can find people in need. The other thing, on Saturday, we have Shop With A Cop for the county and the township. It's a great program. I think we have 15 or 16 kids this year that myself and a bunch of my partners are going to be shopping with kids at Target, buying clothing and everything. So, we're really looking forward to that. And then, and then finally, the biggest thing I could say right now about prevention is, a couple of weeks away from Christmas, make sure you pick your packages up when they get delivered or somebody else have them. We always see a rise of package thefts. We want those phone calls so we can stat-track, so we can try to put cases on people. But inevitably, there's some knuckleheads driving around stealing packages in mail. So, pick up your mail every day and get those packages, get the packages. And we also recommend cameras. If you do have cameras, or any citizens have cameras, we do encourage them to register with our Eagle Eye program. Doesn't give us access to the camera at all, but it allows us to put where cameras are on a map. So, if we do have a burglary, package theft, we can go to this map and, and say, oh, you know, so-and-so on Taylor Road has a camera. Let's see if we capture any, any footage of that. We have really good closure rate with that type of information. Without cameras, it's hard to solve. So, that's all I got. Anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, how do we go about getting, like, if we don't have a camera and we'd like to be part of that program? Because not only would it help me, but it'd help you guys. Is there a potential for that, where we can get a camera? Because, or is that only, is it only part of the Eagle Eye program? Like, do you have to get a camera from like a security service and then tell you you have it?
So, me personally, I use Ring. So, I have a Ring camera. I have a couple of them. So, that's registered. So, it can be any, any camera system that you decide. And then you just tell us, hey, I have a camera at this address. We put it on a map. We don't have access to it. We're not asking anybody for access. It just gives us a map, Google map of where these cameras are at. But any camera will work as long as it works for you. Because then we don't access it without the, the owner of the camera. Obviously, we can't. So, it's done in a partnership.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's really wonderful, because, you know, we saw the national news about the shooter in New York, and that type of system helped catch the guy. So, it's really important. And can you tell me again, you can go on to the website and do the Eagle Eye? How do you sign up?
So, yeah, if you go to the, it's, Jeff, help me out here. Plaster.ca.gov/sharef. But there's also another website. Do you remember what it is?
No, on our main website, you can apply that program and then drop down.
And you basically fill out like an online application, if you will. And then our crime analysts will reach out to you, confirm the information, and then they'll get it on our map. Detectives, patrol sergeants, we all have access to this map. So, if there is a felonious crime, we can actually pull up the map right away and say, oh, there's a camera across the street. It saves us time from having to knock on every door. Obviously, we still do that, but if we can identify where the cameras are, we'll go straight to them and then kind of work backwards from there.
That's a great idea. And maybe Chamber of Commerce could send it out to all their members as well. Business, our businesses can really help with that. Thank you.
That'd be great.
Excellent idea.
What's that?
Excellent idea.
Well, thank you.
Well, you know, on a side note from, just from us, from the town, that very camera system is what was used to find Rogers, the person who hit Roger. So, we have personal knowledge, and even though it happened out of county, it was our Placer County Carlton who was an absolute godsend. And he is that type of detective that, you know, you give him that bone and he's going to take care of it. So, we have personal experience here in the, in the town of how valuable that system is.
It really is. I think the biggest hang-up for people is, like me, I don't always read the instructions when I build things. A lot of people think that they're giving, they're giving us access to the cameras. And I think that's the hang-up for a lot of people. And we want absolutely nothing to do with that. So, we just try to reassure people that we're just asking where they're at, not, not for access.
Well, also, when Ace Hardware got burglarized, it would have been really helpful as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, there is another system that businesses and others can sign up for. It's called the FUSIS system, where they actually do have access to those camera systems. And, and with the new council seat, maybe at a future date, we can bring back the detective to kind of give a presentation on that.
Absolutely. I'd be more happy to do that.
Yeah, we had him do the full presentation at our league luncheon. But he also came and talked to us at our public safety.
You're right, he did.
And we've been talking about trying to get updated cameras for the train depot and some different strategic areas to be able to be involved in that program to be implemented here also. Right, that's the same thing? Yeah.
Absolutely. FUSIS is a great program. It picks up license plates. If there's a homicide down in Sacramento and the license plate's captured, they put that in the system, and it drives up Taylor Road. If there's a camera, we're going to get notified right away. We're actually working on right now, one of our newly-promoted lieutenants went back to New York and was at New York PD's, NYPD's Real Time Crime Center. So, that's something we're getting ready to stand up to. It's going to take a little bit of time, but we are working towards that right now.
Is there two different names of two different programs that you have? One is really just the license plate capture, right? Is that, what program is that called?
So, it's part of FUSIS. That is part of FUSIS.
It is still FUSIS?
Yeah.
And, but is there, I thought there was a different name for the other one that, for businesses and different home cameras? Is that, is it still under the same umbrella?
You mean like the Eagle Eye or?
It wasn't called that. It was called something else. What was that called?
I can't remember now, but I know what you're talking about.
I can't recall, but we can definitely bring somebody back to educate.
Yeah, the Eagle, okay, yeah. So, the Sheriff's Eagle Eye Camera Registration's right on the website. And there's a, you just register. It's like an online application. So, the two things, FUSIS, we can log into, Eagle Eye, we can't.
And if I'm not mistaken, they apprehended the guy for Ace Hardware through FUSIS. And the state of Nevada, there was a collaboration there.
The nice thing about FUSIS is it's not just Placer County, Sacramento region. It's, it's all over. So, it all, they're all interconnected.
I think we would appreciate, I think we all would appreciate them coming, the staff.
I can work on that, absolutely. All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, for the.
Chief Derrick.
Yep.
Hey, well, good evening. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate it. We'll jump right into the facts and figures, and then we can talk about the cool stuff. About 360 responses last month. I'm going to learn to put this on the first page so I know what the number is instead of guessing and then correcting myself going forward. You can see from the heat map, a lot of what Officer Billado was saying. You see the hotspot in front of Del Oro there. We got some on the freeway and Brace and Sierra College. Everything else is pretty well-dispersed there throughout the community. Next slide, please. 347, gosh darn it, I knew I was off by a few. But anyway, 64% medical, 220 calls. Not that you all really care, but something we talk about at the district. 78 of those were to residential care facilities, so that number's coming up. As we get more, it becomes a concern of how much time we're spending at those types of facilities. 2% fires. We'll come talk about that a little bit here in a minute. 15 false alarms, 101 service good intent calls. The orange is 2024. You can see that jump in service and good intent from this year versus last year. Next slide, please. Our times crept up a little this month. 9:21 here from the time you pick up the phone to the time we get there. 9:12 average. We're working to fix that. Sometimes you're the windshield, sometimes you're the bug. So, we'll get faster. That's my commitment to you. Next slide, please. Board meeting tomorrow night, 6:30 if you're going to attend. We also will be at LAFCO talking about extending our ambulance service into the Town of Loomis at some point in the near future. So, we're going to attend LAFCO, and then we'll be at our board meeting, where we'll swore in some, swear in some new members. And then we have Santa in Loomis, December 21st during the day from 8 until about 12. Our map should be online. It's a great opportunity. We love driving around, seeing all the people. We started on Friday night, last Friday, and there was this one cute little girl, and must have been three or four, dressed up in her PJs, had, had her stuffy with her. And then Santa came around the corner and just like a bundle of energy. It was fantastic. We will be adopting hopefully our strategic plan, which will set our goals for the next three to five years. So, super excited about that. Give us some direction and goals. District tips, fireplace maintenance. If you haven't, I think we might have talked about both of these things last month, but we had a couple of fires here recently that really bring this to the forefront of what we're talking about. If you haven't had your fireplace cleaned, or you don't know what I'm talking about, look on the Googles, find somebody to clean your fireplace, get it cleaned out if you're going to burn in it, have them do that. Because what happens is the creosote builds up and the flue, you start a fire, you're thinking everything's good, and all of a sudden, everything above it is burning because that creosote gets hot enough to cook off and start burning itself. And then usually what happens is that expands into the attic. The attic starts burning, and you're standing around, the fire alarm's going off, and nobody knows why. Well, everything above you is on fire. So, we don't want to see that happen at any time, but especially this time of year. So, please, please, please get your fireplace cleaned out. Secondarily, if you are running a fireplace, a chimnea, a solo stove, or anything that produces, that you burn wood in and has ashes, if you clean that out, be very careful. We've had two fires, three fires recently where people cleaned it out, set it next to their house, set it next to their garbage can, set it next to their accessory dwelling unit. And a few days later, it's caught on fire and burned the side of their building, if not the whole building. So, we have some recommendations that will be coming to our social media and our website soon. But essentially, what you want to do is, please don't put them in a paper bag. Okay, let's start with that. Secondarily, don't do it like the next morning, or, you know, if you are, put it in a metal container. In that metal container, let it sit for four days, 96 hours. And then at that point, you can put it into your trash can. So, the couple of things we saw was in a paper bag. And then also, they just took them out of their, their burning vessel and put it straight into the trash can. And between then and pickup, it was a couple of days later, so, but it sits and smolders, and then it catches stuff on fire, and then all of a sudden, you got plastic and the whole thing going. So, please, please, please. Yeah, you get the idea at this point. And with that, happy holidays. Congratulations to the new people and the re-elected. Well done. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Now, we have a update from the UC Master Gardeners.
Hello, my name is Karen Lopez. I'm a master gardener here in Placer County. I am the current garden coordinator for the demonstration garden at the library. And I am joined with Sandy Fitzpatrick, who is our public community liaison for the demonstration garden. So, first, let me tell you how beautiful your holiday decorations outside looked. It was just so nice to drive up here. It's so pretty, it's so festive. So, I wanted to just give you an update on a few things that are coming up and a little bit of where we've been. So, we measure our success by the number of, we call them contacts, that we make with the public. So, we had over 300, we had 355 contacts come through the garden in November. So, that basically equates to 355 visitors that came through the garden. So, to put that in perspective, we've been there since March, as you know. And we have, on average, about 300 people come through. Our biggest month so far was September. We had about 500 people come through because we had our big event that month, or October, actually. So, anyway, it continues to get better, so we're really enthusiastic about that. It's nice to have so many people coming through the garden. The next thing I'll tell you is that there's nothing going on in the garden in December. Actually, we don't have a presentation planned in the library in December, but the garden is open every day that the library is open. They may choose to close if there's really inclement weather or something like that, but the garden will be open all the hours the library is open. But there's still a lot going on in the garden. We're super excited to be putting in a water feature in the back corner of the garden. It's going to be a, really designed to help the birds and the invertebrates that come and visit. It's not a, it's not a fountain, fountain like you might think of. It's really going to fit in nicely back there. We started construction this last Saturday. We had the Del Oro FFA group out, a very enthusiastic, thank goodness, group of about 10 kids that came out and helped us move a bunch of cobble, a bunch of rock, and dig the hole. So, saved all of us probably many, many trips to the chiropractor and a lot of ER visits. So, we're really happy about that. They are, we are so thankful for their help. And also, we just are really excited about the continued relationship that we have with Del Oro FFA. It's been really good. They've been out a few times and done a few things with us, so that's great. The new garden bed will feature different varieties of Californian native aquatic and semi-aquatic plants, so we're sticking with our native theme. The pump will be solar-powered. The reservoir will hold water that will be recirculated, and that will be refilled from our own irrigation system in the dry season, and it'll be refilled with rainwater in the wet season. So, the fountain will be energy-efficient and water-wise, two of the things that we're really diligent about demonstrating in the garden. The fountain was designed, and they are overseeing all the installation, by a company called Golden Pond, and they are a local Loomis company. So, if you don't know who they are, they're right up on, I think that's still Sierra College, as you cross there. They're right there. And we're really sort of, one of the two members there is a master gardener, but they, they have agreed to do all the design work. They built a beautiful, they put it together, and they're, they're helping to oversee all the installation. So, then that's, actually, they have done that as an in-kind donation to the master gardener, to the demonstration garden. So, that's really super. So, in, moving on, in January, the presentation in the library on the 11th will be on seed-saving techniques. I'm sure that's something that keeps you up at night. Docents will be available in the demonstration garden on that day from 10 to 12. So, that'll be our next Open Garden Day to answer questions and provide information. Then, the next thing we're really excited about is on January 25th, Master Gardeners of Placer County will be holding their first-ever seed swap. That is, I'm sure you already know this, but that is the National Seed Swap Day. The last Saturday and Saturday is always the National Seed Swap Day. So, we'll be holding that at the Loomis Veterans Hall from 9 to 12. So, this event is free and open to the public. The community is welcome to come in and bring seeds that they, if they want to swap. That's by definition what a seed swap day is. But if people don't have seeds, we have lots stockpiled. We'll be, we'll have a lot of seed there. And people are welcome to come in and take what they, what they want, what they'd like to plant in their own, at their own home in the season. We also have a lot of fun seed-related activities for kids and adults, so there'll be a lot of things going on. We anticipate having tables of flowers, annuals and perennials, vegetables, cool and warm season, herbs, Californian natives, native trees, grasses and sedgees. So, we're looking for a wide variety of seeds that we can offer to the public that they can take home. We'll have free door prizes every hour or two, so we'll do three, three prizes throughout the whole event. So, we're hoping it'll be a really fun day. It is our first, this has been a year of firsts for us. So, this is our first kind of effort at this, and we'll see. But we've had a lot of success getting folks into the garden through social media and the different ways that we do. And I'll be looking forward to posting on the chamber's website as well. So, we look forward to seeing you in the garden, and we'd be happy to, at any time, arrange a private tour for anybody who's interested to come out and see what we're doing out there. there. So, any questions? Okay, thank you.
I'm looking forward to seeing pictures of the fountain and at a future meeting, right?
Okay, yep, we'll break some then.
And I just want to say, it's cool how you got the FFA to come out and help you guys, and I think it's just, it's a cool part of our community that we have, everybody's so interconnected, it's just, it's great.
Yeah, we love that, we love being part of that too, so thank you.
And there's no business on this meeting, so does anybody have any council committee reports? You start, you can go that way.
Okay, so I will leave public safety to you. Would you like to talk with them? Okay, I will just report on PCTPA. So as some of you may or may not know, they had a measure on the ballot, Measure B. It was mostly impacting Roseville, Rockland, and Lincoln as a quarter cent sales tax measure to, for a self-help program for the Highway 65. So we, Loomis would have only benefited, and we would have had really none of the risk other, I mean, well, much like our Costco, right? If we go somewhere else and we go and we spend money there, then we would pay it, but it would not be a tax on our own town. However, the reason that this failing, why it affects Loomis, is because a lot of our cut-through traffic, the traffic that is complained about in this town, we've all been subject to it, is cut-through traffic from Sierra College. So the PCTPA, since Measure B did not pass, they are looking to get a raise grant of 25 million, so hopefully, they will, you know, will be able to, to deal with our transportation needs, and then in that process, it will help alleviate some of our traffic. So that's really the only thing I have to give an update on, but like Measure E, it's very, it would have helped a lot. Measure B would have helped a lot for our area to deal with some of the traffic that we already have. So we'll cross our fingers and hope for this next raise grant of 25 million for PCTPA.
Thank you. She had no committees, yeah. So I went, I attended a conference, it was a forum this last week, but put on by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce. It was called a Climate Resiliency Conference, but it was more of a Hazard Resiliency Conference. And I would like to say I got a ton out of it, but pretty much what I got out of it was that any, for every, they did, the U.S. Chamber did a study, and they said for every $1 you spend preparing your community for hazards, you save $11. And so anything you can do to not prevent them, but to just prepare for these emergencies saves you money in the long run. And so I think that, they put out a study, I forwarded it to Town Manager Wes, which also forwarded to our chamber, and so unfortunately, they didn't give us any ideas on how to prepare, they just said you should prepare, and so I thought that that was unhelpful, but now I know that we should, like we didn't know beforehand. I also got appointed this last week to the League of California Cities Environmental Quality Policy Committee for the next year, and so I haven't done anything with that, but I did want to say that you were on a committee, right? And you're on a committee, and Jenny was on a committee, and I think that the fact that three or four of us are on, represented at the league level is just amazing for our town, just shows how much we care about Loomis and about policy statewide, too. Also, last thing I want to say is that I met, this last Saturday, I had a meeting where just anybody who wanted to come in and talk to me about anything, really, and we had a good turnout. My next meeting will be Saturday, January 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the library, and I am changing it to be called Meet the Mayor, because that's what you called it, but also because now I'm the mayor, and so now I can do that. I couldn't do that before, right? So, sorry.
Mine's Meet the Mayor Monday.
Oh, mine's Meet the Mayor, period. So, all right, that's all I have.
If you weren't going to mention the fact that you got your appointment, I was going to, I was going to remind you that you needed to, because that's very important. We all need to follow our passion, and I know that that's one of your things. I'm going to start with mine, so hopefully, I'm not jinxing myself here, but I might have gotten some good news. So apparently, with elections, how they go, sometimes people who get appointed to chair or vice chair positions don't get reelected. So in addition to me being on the Public Safety Committee, I'm finding out, or I'm waiting to hear back whether I'm going to be the chair of the Public Safety Committee. I was asked today if I was still interested, so I'm saying I'm waiting because there might be something coming back where she comes back to me and says, whoops, sorry, we actually appointed somebody else, but she did ask me if I still was interested, so.
Is that the league?
The league.
Cool.
Yeah, and I don't know what that's going to entail. That might be a little crazy, I might be flying places or something and have a lot more work going. And the other thing is that I'm now on LAFCO, so we have a meeting tomorrow, so I'm hearing that there's a lot of work that I've got, a lot of studying I'm going to be having to do, so that'll keep me kind of busy. We had a meeting last week, and Lincoln was there, and they were talking about annexing, and there were two islands, there's two islands?
Five.
Five islands, okay. Amanda might be able to touch on this a little more than me, but I'm just mentioning that that was my first step, watching Jenny, what she does, and it was a very powerful meeting because we actually saved those islands, and there were people that came and they were basically begging LAFCO, and, you know, it taught me something, that committees are not perfect, and councils are not perfect. We get our readings, and sometimes we overlook things, and in that case, I guess there was a situation where that was overlooked, and the people did not want to be part of the annexation. It was very powerful, and I got a lot out of it, and it made me realize, wow, LAFCO is more important than we actually thought it was. A lot of us think we know what it's about, but it's a very, very extremely important committee. Not only that, it also touches on my two other committees, SP Mud and Public Safety. So where I'm going with that is tomorrow, we have a meeting, and I'm going to be working with Chief Dewar on, they're going to be coming to LAFCO, and so I'm looking forward to that. So, and the other thing, public safety, which that all ties in together, we got to go to the jail, and I will let Amanda share her feelings as well, but it was a very powerful thing for me because I'd never been in a jail, and to see public safety from the side that we normally see, but then go in there and see, this is real, this is what, you know, when they go here, I mean, and Wes can describe his thought process, too, but it was very powerful. That's something I think everybody should see, because I think we'd have less people that going out and doing things that are against the law. If you actually see once you go in there, it's not parties and games like we see in movies, it's not like where people go and they spend time in federal penitentiaries where they're playing poker. It's real. They do, you know, they protect us, they do a good job protecting us and hearing about some of the interesting stories we heard about people who were in there, and I'll let Amanda share, because if you want to share that one story, but again, we're going to go to the Auburn Jail, I think, next, which I hear that's going to be more of an overwhelming experience, which hopefully, we'll be able to talk about then. And two things that came out of this, just so you guys know, we don't just tour, and we don't just have fun, and things like that, and put on events. We also discussed what we're going to do to help the Squalies, Squiz, right?
Pescuetti.
Pescuetti's. So we informed Lieutenant De Little, who is here, because, you know, obviously, he's brand new, and letting, discuss with them our, you know, our thought processes, what was discussed in the last council meeting, and their concerns, and they're actually going to go and they're going to work with the people in that area to make sure that that doesn't go on. The other thing that was brought up, too, was that we're going to, they're going to go and figure out what's going on over there with the church, forgive me, I associate with Land Spots, is that what it's called, Land Spot? And Casey Tenon, and they're going to see if, coming up a resolution with that, so that way, everybody in the town of Loomis is protected. This is what this Public Safety Committee is about. I want everybody in the audience to know, we didn't just create it just for fun and games, because we like law enforcement. We do love the law enforcement, we support them, and we love, you know, first responders, but this is, again, and I have to reiterate this, this is about keeping the town of Loomis safe. And this is an example, two examples of that, is that not only did we go and tour and have a meeting, but we actually talked about how we're going to keep our town safe, and so coming, the public comment, where you come and talk about the things that are happening with your property and bad stuff happening, we actually do something about that. So it was a very beneficial meeting, and I believe that's everything that I wanted to mention, so I'm sorry to be so long-winded, but there was a lot that came out of that committee meeting, so. Amanda, do you want to mention anything else I might have missed? Might have missed something.
No, it was, it was just, it's always wonderful to hear how our, our community agencies, how all the inner workings are, and get to, you know, tour. I mean, Lieutenant De Little was very gracious and really appreciated all of his time in just trying to connect, and then also trying to find solutions, because the Pescuetti's, I was, I had it right, but they were a huge topic of that evening, so, but no, it was, they're just always, it's always really interesting to see, like, we've done probation, we've done the jail. It's good to know how the whole thing works, right? We only see one part of it, but to see how our entire community comes together to keep everyone safe and how it all works out, it was just, it was very educational, so thank you so much, Lieutenant.
Even the padded cell, where I almost got locked into it.
Okay, with that, we're at the end of the meeting. Before we close, I want to say thank you to the town staff, they don't get enough thanks for everything you guys do, we really appreciate it. But I also want to call out Ken Benedict, who is our AV guy in the back there, always setting these things up.
Yeah, you're right. Good job.
I don't think he ever gets thanked you, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you want to come on camera or not? No? All right.
Let everybody see the Wizard of Oz.
Thank you. Yeah, this is the mayor behind the curtain. Thank you again, thank you to all of you. And with that, we will, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I was looking at some reports, and apparently, some incident at Horseshoe Bar, the overpass is closed right now.
Uh-oh.
Okay, so just to be, just so if you couldn't hear it, the overpass at Horseshoe Bar is closed because of an incident on the freeway?
On the overpass.
On the overpass, okay, so if you're going that direction, please be safe.
I'm actually here to talk to you right now.
All right.
Oh.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Ken. All right, with that, I will adjourn.
Good job.